This is the August 30th, 2022 meeting of the Acushnet Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped, and we do have a quorum. First item on the agenda today is the secretary's report from August 1st. Does anyone have any clarifications or questions on those minutes?
No.
Okay, we'll just need a motion.
Make a motion to accept the secretary's report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is the budgets. So I've given you two budgets today. One is FY '22, and then the other is the current FY '23. But I wanted to give you FY '22 because you might remember that we were waiting on the reconciliation form from Town Hall, and I wanted to take a look at that and make sure everything matched before handing you the final report of FY '22. So this is the final FY '22 budget. We spent 97.7 percent, excuse me, 97.7% of the salary line, so almost, so close. And 99.9% from operating, which I'm really proud of.
Oh.
So in total, we spent 98.2% of the budget with just a little over $5,000 left, which meant, I believe they used it as a, into departmental transfer to cover shortfalls in other department budgets, and then any remaining went into the general fund. But, you know, with our turnover in FY '22, losing a couple of staff members, there was nothing we could do about that, the timing of rehires, which is why our technician line had that overage. But we've come pretty close. So that's the final FY '22. So unless you have any specific questions, that's the end of that. I'll be revisiting FY '22 when I do the financial report for the state, so we may talk about FY '22 again, but not in great detail. And then FY '23, our year-to-date, that's a to-date budget that you have here, which probably doesn't look all that different from when we met at the beginning of August. We're now 16% spent out from salary, so we're right on track with that, where that needs to be for this point of fiscal year. And 28.4% spent out on operating. And again, I don't think I've really spent anything from operating since we met because I was gone for two of those weeks and haven't done too much. There may have been an additional ever-source bill since when we last met. But so far, 18.7%, 18.7%, yikes, spent for FY '23. Feeling good about where we're at. So again, unless you have anything specific. Does anybody have anything?
No.
Okay. Do we need a motion?
Motion to accept the expense reports just presented.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Old business is the ARRIS report. Okay. So as you may have seen through emails from the MBLC or through my director's report, I've still been unable to complete the ARRIS report, but not because of anything on my part. The original deadline was August 26th. It's since been extended until September 9th. Baker &amp; Taylor, the company that Mass Board of Library Commissioners uses for their reporting software, unfortunately, their website is a victim of ransomware attack, and that's caused a serious outage. They're having a very hard time coming back. I mean, Baker &amp; Taylor has, you know, they're not just, they just don't make this reporting software. They also are a major book vendor, a major DVD vendor. They have e-products, so this is a big, I guess, and all aspects of their business have been affected by this. So there's no timeline as to when they will have their reporting software back online. So again, the MBLC has extended the deadline until September 9th for us. I only have like three pieces of data entry to enter, and then the edit checks that I was unable to do before I went on vacation. And of course, I thought, oh, I've got plenty, I've got a whole week when I get that. And I just missed by one day getting it, getting it done because the software, the ransomware attack happened the weekend that I came back. So, you know, this is something that's out of anyone's control. The MBLC is really doing their best to keep us updated, and this is a situation that they cannot do anything about. They're doing their best to keep us updated. They are working with the networks to get specific information that needs to be used for state aid to be configured, primarily non-resident circulation counts. That's a big factor of state aid. So they're working with the networks to get that information so that hopefully we don't see delays in stated payments because of this glitch that we're experiencing. So though I have not been able to complete the report officially, I've unofficially completed it on paper, so I can at least put a pin in it with you all and tell you this is what our stats are from the ARRIS report. And then, once I can get that information in, Jen can sign the report with me, and we'll send it off. But just so that we don't have to talk about it anymore, besides me letting you know when it actually is completed, I figured I'd just give you the stats from it. ARRIS is all statistics, as I think you all know. Our salary and reporting, salary reporting and staff levels didn't change at all from FY '22 to FY '23 because nobody got increases, as you know, so that all stayed the same. Our total holdings increased slightly from FY '21 to FY '22. We went from 90,734 items in FY '21 to 91,116 in FY '22. That increase represents a small addition to our print material, but also, more so, it represents additions to downloadable audio content through the network. And really, in looking at it this year, I really just wanted to repeat, as I have before, that due to space constraints here in our physical space, we are, I mean, as you know, we add content monthly. There's thousands of items that get added every year, but we're also weeding out hundreds of print items every year. So it never looks like our collection grows because we're essentially adding in five items and removing one or two because we don't have space on the shelf to keep everything. So we knew this was going to be an issue, you know, in 2012, 2013, when plans for this space was being thought of, but I'm really seeing it as an issue now. Like, I think it's finally hitting us that we do not have room to grow and keep what we already have. So it's just important to repeat that to you all so that you're not wondering why, hey, why don't we have over 100,000 items in our collection by now? We never will have, unless our digital content continues to grow. Circulation increased from 50,852 items in FY '21 to 79,872 items in FY '22. So as I've talked about before, we're getting back on track to where we were before COVID. It's very reassuring for me to see the increase in numbers every time we see an increase. And so seeing that in print with the ARRIS is really like, okay, we're getting back on track to where we were before. Our non-resident circulation increased from 14,846 items in FY '21 to 24,980 items in FY '22. And again, our non-resident circulation was super high pre-COVID. Then it sort of fell because of COVID. We weren't really circulating to Acushnet residents, never mind non-Acushnet residents, at a high level. And so this is really great to see that 10,000 item increase because this is going to impact our state aid in a very positive way because we will get credit for circulating to non-residents. Our service hours increased to our regular full hours for all of FY '22 after dropping tremendously for FY '21, so that's great to see. Our total attendance increased from 841 visits to FY '21, because we were only open for about two months, to 18,531 visits in FY '22. So that's great. We offered 44 programs with a total attendance of 1,226 in FY '22. We got back to community outreach. We visited local schools 14 times, reaching 636 people. Bottom line, our service conditions certainly improved from FY '21 to FY '22, all due to changes with COVID procedures. The financial report is the next part of the state aid process that is due in early October. Again, we can't do anything for that report right now because the system is down, but I am going to do it on paper so that when the system is up, I just have to enter the figures that I've already figured out. So I am going to take some time away from everything else in early September so that I can really just sit and do it on paper. I haven't done it on paper in a long time, so I'll do it on paper and be ready to go when the system's up and running. So that's everything for the ARRIS report update. So again, and you don't have to approve that, but it's just more so that you're in the know of what's happening here, all the good that's happening.
Definitely on the upswing.
Yeah.
For sure.
And everything. Yeah, and everything, which is, it's, I mean, you know it when you're here every day, and you can see monthly reports, we see the increases, but when you sit down and do this big report that accounts for the whole year, it's very reassuring, you know, for me to see that we're definitely moving in the direction that we want to be. So it's great. Does anybody have any questions or anything on any of that, the ARRIS, sir? There you go.
No.
Okay. Moving on to new business, the ending of the hotspot program. So you may remember that the hotspot program started a year ago. The Mass Board of Library Commissioners was able to get funding through the Institute of Museum and Library Services from the American Rescue Plan Act, which covered a year's worth of hotspot usage to Massachusetts libraries. So the program ends officially, this program in the, the way that we know it, ends September 30th, 2022. We launched the program in mid-September of 2021. We received five hotspots from the MBLC. That was the minimum that you could get, was five. We didn't know how they would work here, so we just went with the minimum, which has proven to be just fine, which we'll talk about more in a minute. Before I get into the statistics, I will say that if we were to support this kind of program on our own, it would cost approximately $2,000 for the coming year. Every year, it increases a little bit of what the monthly fee is because with any technology, and as you know, as, you know, if you have a TV packet, cable internet package at your own homes, or if you have Wi-Fi at your home, you know that every year those prices go up. So even though it's $2,000 this year, it could be $2,500 next year, or, you know, it's, it's never going to go down from 2,000, let's put it that way. And the state is never going to have the funding to do what they were able to do as this part of this recovery, you know, creating equitable access to technology for people. So that said, I've spent a lot of time with Sandra and Leslie analyzing the statistics of what we did circulate and trying to make a decision of, is it financially feasible for us to do this on our own, and is it worth it financially for us to do this on our own? So in the almost one year that we had the five hotspots, they circulated 132 times in that time period. When you hear that, it's like, oh, wow, 132, that's, that's a lot. But keep in mind, we had five of them. So five, you know, 132 divided by five, if you're breaking it down in that way, is not that high of a number, 20-something per unit, which isn't that high. So that's, that's part of it.
For how long each?
One week. One week, no renewal. And we did have a part of the policy is that if, when you returned it, you weren't, you were technically not supposed to be able to borrow it again right away. If we had four sitting on the shelf and someone said, well, I'm just going to come back tomorrow and get it again, we usually just let them take it. If we had none on the shelf, then we didn't because the reason why we weren't allowing for renewals was so that everyone had a fair shot to come, walk in the door and get one. And most of the time, people were able to walk into the door and get one because there were often, many sitting on the shelf. But, you know, it was very rare that all five were out at once. So it's 132 total circs, but when you really get into the numbers, and this is why I had other people work with me on this, so that I could really make sure I was getting this correctly, the number 132 only accounts for 26 households. So it's 26 households borrowing the hotspots, all of the households. And that's 16 were Acushnet households of the 26. So 10 households were from neighboring communities, which included New Bedford, Westport, and Dartmouth. And the Dartmouth checkout was to a staff member from Acushnet. And then we had one really weird unknown where we could not find the record. So I'm not sure what happened to the patrons' record in the 11 months, but it was gone. So when you're looking back at that number 132 again, it's, of the 132 times they were borrowed, 113 of those borrows belonged to Acushnet cardholders. Of that 113, 90 of those checkouts were divided between three households. So one household checked it out 32 times, another checked it out 44 times, and a third checked it out 14.
44 times?
32 times and 44 times, using, so households meaning that like two, two people in the household.
Right.
Someone borrows it, someone returns it, someone borrows it, someone returns it on a different card.
Right. What does that mean? They don't have Wi-Fi, and this is what they have?
They might not have Wi-Fi, and that's who they're, they're using it in places.
Nobody could go way that much.
Right. Right. I don't, I don't think it, in the high numbers, exactly, I don't think it's because somebody was going away for the week on a road trip and they needed a reliable Wi-Fi server. So I think you're exactly right. I think in this case, they don't have Wi-Fi at home.
Okay.
And so this was providing, has been providing them with the opportunity to have Wi-Fi at home. So yes, I think you're exactly right. I mean, chances are, they don't, they wouldn't need it if they had reliable Wi-Fi.
Right.
I would think they wouldn't need it. So again, when you're looking at 113 times checked out by Acushnet cardholders, 90 of those are divided by three households, that only leaves 23 checkouts to other Acushnet households. And some of those are like six times, four times, two times, one time, a lot of one times. And two of the cases have won one time. One time, someone dropped their phone in the toilet and didn't have internet access, so came and borrowed the hotspot. Another time, the internet was down. By the time he got home, his internet was back up, and he held on to it for a whole week and didn't use it. So, I mean, like, this is, and we only know of those, like, instances, you know, but, in other words, when you like get into the nitty-gritty of it, though it's been great to have, and I think people who've used it, myself included, it's been really valuable to them. However, when you get down to it at the $2,000, it would cost us $77 per checkout at the rate that we've been doing this. And it's very hard for me to ask you all to justify $77 per checkout, when I personally have gotten a hotspot from my mom that I only pay about $15 a month for, for her to have access at home, you know, and that's, and, you know, I know not all individuals can do that, but I'm, you know, doing it for her, and it's 15 a month. 77 per checkout is very, it's very hard for me to come here and say, will you approve me, because none of our other services cost nearly that much per checkout. So with that information, I mean, it's, it's really up, up to you. If you want me to pursue working individually, you know, with T-Mobile, I would certainly pursue how we would do that. I'm not recommending that we do that because the other huge piece of it that I haven't even brought up yet is the staff time involved because now that the Mass Board of Library Commissioners is out of the equation, we don't have the state to rely on to help us when there's an issue. We'd be doing a troubleshooting on our own. If someone brings it home and it doesn't work, it'll be me who has to figure out with T-Mobile why it's not working and try to troubleshoot, and I really don't have the time to add the potential for that to my already tough workload. The other, I mean, if we had a tech librarian who could, or a circulation supervisor who could take this on as part of the responsibility of developing the program and monitoring it, I could maybe say, well, from the staff end, it's not too much of a burden. I think right now with our staffing levels, it would be a burden, and it's a, to me, a burden to our, would have to come from state aid, and it would be a burden to state aid. But that's, that's just my thoughts on it. Now that you know a little bit more about the statistics behind it, you know, I welcome your thoughts on it. Does anyone have any, anything, any thoughts, any comments?
Well, I mean, so narrow usage of expense.
Definitely.
Maybe somewhere in the future, it may evolve to a point where it's feasible and it's, people, you know, people want to use it, but I think the way it's so narrowly, it doesn't seem to be something we want, so.
And I assume we would still have to get five? Well, that was the minimum that you needed through this T-Mobile program. So it's my understanding from what the research I have done that we would still need a minimum of five. Because, right, if we didn't need that, that would change things.
Oh, slightly. But it means still, you're still in the troubleshooting arena.
The downside of also, there's been times where we've had, like I said, some sitting there for days on end, and no one knew was coming in to borrow them. And we've done, we think, you know, we've analyzed how we marketed it. It's been shared numerous times on social media. It's been shared beyond the library's social media page. It's not like it's just been, library's page, it's been newsletters, we have signage around the library, it's, we've told people at the counter, I mean, we've really tried to pipe them up a little bit more. And I think people, when they've used them, especially people who've taken road trips and love them, but that's a one-off for a lot of families, you do that one time a year, and then.
Right.
But the downside to, if we were to cut to two or three, and then the program becomes more popular, then we only have two or three. And we'd never have any checked in for someone who just like, you know, decided they need to go pay or something. So, I mean, and then I guess at that point, you could always add to it. And I mean, I'm sure if, you know, I could keep my eyes open for a grant opportunity that could present itself in the future because maybe that'll happen, especially now that this program is being winded down, and I'm imagining other libraries are not going to be able to sustain the expense of this. And we looked into it today. New Bedford Public has between their, I think it's five branches, made it just before, but they have like 50 or 60 of these hotspots. And I don't think New Bedford could sustain 50 or 60 if we can't sustain five. I don't know how New Bedford would sustain that many between all their locations. So I would imagine other libraries are going to need to drop this program, and maybe a grant opportunity would present itself, or maybe the cost would drop because.
If you dropped it, could somebody here go to New Bedford Newsstand?
Yes, unless New Bedford changes their policy, and they can't, they don't loan to neighboring communities, but, you know, we, we actually have a couple of users who figured out that local libraries have it, so they return it, they go to another library, they borrow one, and on the same day, they return the one they've had from us for a week so that they always have it, you know, and then they come back to us and get it two weeks later, and, you know, that's, so they should hypothetically be able to go to the Wilkes Branch in New Bedford, or Rochester, or for Haven, and borrow at Dartmouth, and borrow them as well.
And why is that so much money? Because is it $180 for you to get the one hotspot fee on? $180, so why is it $2,000?
I have, I have no idea.
Twice, it's going twice.
Why is that? I have no, I mean, mine isn't through T-Mobile, it's through Verizon, and it's, I've had, I don't know if it's to do with, because I have other phone lines, so it drops the price of the line, like in my, I'm guessing, I can't say that for sure, but in my situation, I'm thinking that's why it's so much less. Because I, it's, I've got to pay for like four phone lines on that, so that every time you add a line, it drop, you know, the price drops a little bit.
Well, that makes sense.
Just someone knows what I'm thinking.
You get a hotspot like that from Verizon?
That I, like, not that I own, but, but I technically own from Verizon, like, same way you go in and get, you know, it's just on my phone plan, and so it's like, did I say 15 a month? I'm paying for that. So I'm paying like 15 a month. I just, we just added a phone line, so I'm trying to remember, what is it now? It's like $15 a month. And so my mom does not have Wi-Fi at home, and so she just uses this hotspot to be able to do anything that she would need.
And she has, and it's just $15 a month?
And I, yeah, and I pay 15 a month through Verizon.
But you should have your phone.
If she were doing it on her own and didn't have four phone lines. Right, so that, I'm imagining that's why it's, it's the price that it is. But if you're a household with a couple of people in it, and you, you have the phone lines, and you add, and it might not be that much. And so many people now also have cell phones, you know, smartphones that have the ability to be a hotspot, like my phone can be a hotspot. So that might be why we don't have a ton of people ringing down our doors for this either because they already have the device that can power other devices that they're using.
So all this time, I probably had it and didn't know it.
Maybe. Hey, I don't know. Depends. Well, yeah, it depends, but you may, maybe you do.
I mean, I'm laughing, but I'm right with you.
Maybe you do.
I knew those phones did more than just using the telephone.
I mean, I don't know, mine isn't always like super reliable. There are times where, you know, if I'm trying to stream something especially, it's not going to, it's not as powerful as the device is on its own.
And I think your hotspot uses your data.
It does use the data.
So if you don't have unlimited data, then that's an issue.
An issue. But as it stands now, like, I would love to come in here and say, I think we should keep this going, and yes, we'll, we'll make this work. But at the, when I've done the math and sat with the numbers, it just seems like, wow, we don't, we don't support anything else that costs this much per checkout. So it makes it hard to say, I think we should do this, and I think you should, you know, approve that state aid be spent this way. It just makes it hard to say that.
I like the idea of keeping your eyes open for a grant. And I think with, with everyone else, you know, all the other libraries that are going to be in the same situation, I would be surprised if something didn't come out about it, or some sort of incentive or something so that you can get them at a discount. So I mean, I think it would be, you know, it would be good just to keep your eyes open and see about that. If others agree, then.
Sure, when everybody drops it.
Well, that's what I mean. Everybody drops it. They might be like, well, you know.
Right.
Well, what's going to happen to all these hotspots?
So we send them back. I don't know what happens. There's a, there's a whole, like, there's like a manual that the MBLC just sent out, winding down your hotspot program. It's a, you know, multi-page manual, and there's a section on what you need to do. And you can keep the cases because the cases came from somewhere else, and no one wants the cases, you can keep the cases, but we will have to send them back to T-Mobile. And then I don't know if T-Mobile just recirculates them, you know, to their customers, or how that works. But they're definitely, I'm imagining they're going to be getting quite a few back. I mean, maybe I'm wrong, and they're, and people are coming up with the money for this, but I highly doubt.
That's a good idea.
Okay. So that'll maybe be old business one day, is discussing hotspots. Can't go better.
I don't, we don't need to vote on that, so we're, I, we're good. Did anyone else have anything else on the hotspots?
No.
And move on to the next topic, which is summer reading statistics.
Summer reading statistics, I'm throwing a lot of numbers at you today. All good, though, which is, for the most part, it's great. So our July circulation, which I did provide you today with this July circulation sheet because I didn't have that ready when we last met on August 1st. So our total circulation for the month of July, as you can see, was 9,135 items. So our total circulation for the month of July, as you can see, was 9,135 items. So that's our second highest July in, in our history because the next highest was in, or the, you know, first place was in 2019. We circulated 10,451 items in July of that year in 2019. So we're not far off from where we were, you know, in 2019, which is great because I've had my eyes on 2019 for a very long time. So I'm really happy that we seem to be, again, getting back on track if the summer that continues. So that's.
The 9,000 is for July 22?
Yes, July 22, yeah, and we were.
Okay, so it says 21, I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, no, sorry, thank you. Yeah, and I'm just seeing that I didn't put in the children's, or any program statistics for July, I don't think it's a program. This is what happens when you're.
It's fine, you did, you did an awesome job with this.
So I, I will add, thank you for pointing that out and I will add in the program statistics and I will give that to you next time so that you have that. But yeah, so circulation, good. Everything, you know, good to see on the report. In terms of the rest of summer, I mean, how numbers went otherwise for summer. And again, obviously, I don't have August statistics yet because it's still August, so I'll have those by the next time we meet. But in terms of the rest of summer, and in terms specifically of summer reading, we had 327 people officially sign up for summer reading this year, meaning that they signed up and then they came back to participate either in the Read and Bead program or in the Scratch to Win program that we did for ages 10 and up, including teens and adults, which is, which is great. That's, it's a number very typical to what we saw in 2019 and before 2019. So we were pleased with that amount of people. We distributed by manual count, which is completely, I mean, like, in other words, we distributed way more than this, but in the, what we accounted for in the hecticness at the, hectic, is that a word, hecticness? In the hectic moments at the counter and using some awesome young volunteers to help us distribute the beads in the Read and Bead program, we handed out 2,839 beads by our count, but I'm sure that's, there's at least a few hundred more that were not accounted for. We had exactly 100, which is weird because that was not intentional, exactly 100 instant winners in the Scratch to Win game, meaning that they were able to pick a prize right away from the prize cart. We had 10 second chance winners as part of that Scratch to Win game, which was, they were all very excited. They got a $5 gift certificate each to Acushnet Creamery, that our, our friend sponsored that, which was great. The goal on BeanStack, that online software that we use that I haven't talked too much about, but we did have three challenges happening on there this summer and the goal was to log 30,000 minutes and Acushnet participants logged 40,212 as of today. They still have for tomorrow to be, have that count towards summer. So that went really well and there was only 34 patrons logging and yet they still logged 40,212 minutes. So imagine if we could get even more people. And again, BeanStack is free through the state, through a grant that they got. We have it through 2023. And we're hoping to partner or we are partnering again with school, at least with the Acushnet Elementary School this year, and we're hoping that even more will get involved so that next year we can see even higher numbers. So that's exciting. We have 51 programs from June 22 through August 31, which is tomorrow, so I can't account for tomorrow's attendance, but for the programs from June 22 until today, 2,319 people attended programs here. We had 10 concerts, 1,082 people attended the concerts. We had 14 special events for kids slash families, 703 people attended those. We had one special event for adults, we had 17 people attend that. And we had 26 staff-led programs, which saw 517 people, so 2,319 in total. Amazing. The total cost for summer reading, which includes all of those, all of the concerts, all of the special events, all of the supplies needed for staff-led programs, miscellaneous items like candy for Candy Bar Bingo, incentives for the prize cart, incentives in terms of the badge books, the reusable book bags, the brag tags and the chains for Read and Bead, like there's a lot of elements. Our total for summer reading was $10,478.81. But again, when you divide that by the 2,319 people who attended programs, and that doesn't even count the people who participated actively in summer reading and benefited from doing that, it's about $4.70 per person who attended. So to me, that's a great money spent. The Friends paid for about half of all of summer reading. They, they were able to give us $5,300 for, they actually gave us $5,100, but I'm turning back $97. So $5,300 from the Friends, state aid came in at $4,976, and we had a $500 grant from the Cultural Council. So it's, it's certainly a big number, but to me, to see everyone come back to the library this summer and all of the positive energy, especially on those concert nights, people were just so happy to be here at the concerts. We got so much good feedback, people would be pulling out of the parking lot, they'd be waving and thanking us and, you know, it was, it was just great. So I think it's well worth what we've spent for next year. We're going to revamp things a little bit next year and take a real close look at, you know, what we're spending, where we could be maybe coming in at a little bit, you know, less spent. We're going to ask the Cultural Council for a little bit more funding and we'll see what the Friends can do, but, you know, I think overall, we, we saw some really great numbers this summer and had some really positive, positive feedback from patrons, which was great. So that's summer 2022.
It's a lot.
It is a lot.
Take a break from summer 2022.
A lot of numbers.
A lot of numbers.
Good numbers. So that's, again, unless you have any specific questions on that.
Anybody have anything specific on that? I think that was great. Definitely all positive. Well, we can roll right into the directive report here.
All right. Here we go. So I was on for two weeks in August, if you know, and I just want to officially give, you know, a note, you know, a shout out to the staff because everybody, nobody called out sick, not that they, you know, it's, but I, you know, if you get sick, you get sick and you have to call out, but everybody was healthy and was here and showed up and did a really great job and in summer, which is, you know, our busiest time. So I really appreciate that the staff all pulled in, particularly Sandra, who, you know, ran the show while I wasn't here, and then to board members who checked in and who volunteered to help out at the concerts. That was awesome and very much appreciated by me and the staff. And it's hard to believe that the last time we met, I hadn't been on vacation yet and now I've been on vacation and I was like, wah, wah. No more vacation. We had a great time. We went to Disney World, it was great, so. It's hot, but it's been so hot here, you know, that it was, wasn't too different. So to highlight a couple of the things we've already talked about through items on the agenda, but just to highlight, I, I wanted to mention that the Acushnet Public School Superintendent, Dr. Bailey, she coordinated a tour of Acushnet for new staff and administration this year. And last Thursday, we were the first stop on the bus tour through Acushnet for the new staff and administration, and it was wonderful to have them here. I had created bookmarks highlighting library services because, you might remember, we have teacher cards that we can issue to teachers. We can do class visits and I wanted to make sure that the new staff knew that, so I put together a bookmark and we also had some leftover Acushnet Wildcats teachings from a prior summer reading program. We used those, used those as incentives once before, so it was great to meet people, to have them here and to be included in such an important part of the start of the school year. I was very excited to be asked, so it was great. And again, like I mentioned, I think these, this continuing collaboration with the schools and this growing relationship we have with them after nurturing that for a long time, I think it just highlights the need for a full-time children's room assistant who can help me out with things like that so that I'm not making the bookmark on the software from my home computer at 5:00 in the morning because I have to scramble and get done before they get it. So, so we'll talk about that more soon. You may have heard or seen with your own eyes that the grass at the library, the crab grass particularly, because grass is really growing, but crab grass will be here when we're all gone, crab grass will still be growing. The crab grass, particularly on the back lawn, had gotten pretty high. And the DPW had been able to come by the first week that I was gone, so the week of August 8th, they were able to come by and they did the whole front end, backsides, all the lawn, took care of that for us. Two weeks later, when I came back from vacation and the crab grass was over a foot tall, unfortunately, the DPW, because they're very busy doing other things aside from lawn maintenance, they weren't able to come to help us out before the last concert on the 24th. And then we had a family event on Saturday morning, a storytime combined with a bubble show, and a lot of the families were surprised at how tall the grass was. And I believe that there was a post on all things Acushnet about it and some discussion about the library's grass situation, but as you know, the building department, who was taking care of that for us, not the, I mean, he wasn't just a building inspector, he was a building commissioner. So it was not just, and, and kind of head of facilities, whether or not that was in his title, but our, our building commissioner wasn't here regularly mowing the lawn, but his team was here mowing the lawn. So in the absence of that, you know, I'm just looking for some guidance from town administration as to what the plan is in the future. In the meantime, a family came here on Saturday, right before the library closed, with their personal riding mower and mowed the library's lawn. So the Corey family did that on Saturday. I'm not even quite sure what to say about it other than thank you because it's made it a lot better, obviously, here, especially with storytime continuing and that being held outdoors if you want to be putting the kids in, foot of crab grass to get to the pavilion. Anyway, they, they did come and do that on Saturday and I, you know, hadn't gotten a response yet from the town administrator, who did respond to me on Monday. They are trying to develop a plan. I also, as a result, Selectman Hinkley, who's the newest selectman, he did come here and meet with me on Monday, and so we could talk a little bit about that and what the plans are. And then I know there is a plan coming, I just don't know when. And in the meantime, we're just going to hope that the DPW can help out and that DPW has said they will help out when they can, but unfortunately, right now, they couldn't. It's kind of a roads or lawn situation because they're paving, paving roads. So the DPW has done tremendous work for us through the years, so of course, I understand completely that they cannot be at our, our beck and call. Not that I expect anyone to be at our beck and call, but I certainly don't expect the DPW to be. But hopefully, there's a plan coming and then, so that particularly before next spring, we have a plan in place of who's going to take care of the lawn. Some more to come. Sure. I know I already mentioned in the summer reading statistics, the part about the Friends providing $5,100 in support of summer reading programs, but I did just want to say that 3,000 of that was earmarked on their budget. The rest came from a letter, letter writing campaign that the Friends President, Kristin Liotti, had worked on this spring. This is something the Friends have done for many years. But I did share with you the list that's been posted in the library and on our website all summer, but I shared it in the report with you to make it really official, that these were the local businesses and organizations that donated to the summer reading programs this year. So there are a lot of businesses and organizations that are to be thanked for supporting the library. And we do still have this up on our website and we're going to leave it posted in house for a little while too.
You want me to read them on camera?
You, you sure could, yeah, sure.
Okay, so thank you to the 2022 sponsors of the summer reading program, Friends of the Acushnet Public Library, Acushnet Creamery, Acushnet Cultural Council, Acushnet Federal Credit Union, Acushnet Firefighter Association, Acushnet Police Association, American Legion Post 265, Captain's Place, The Costello Group, Century House, Gifts to Give, Go Fetch, Illusions Academy of Dance, Jeffrey's Pizza, Knox Electric, Inc., Mosquito Squad of Southeast Massachusetts, Harding Way's Gas Station, Roseland Nursery, Veterans of Foreign Wars, Thomas E. Tuttle Post 7239. Thank you very much.
Thank you for reading, that's great. Thank you, you're welcome, much appreciated. We appreciate everyone who helped to make this summer program possible, so thank you for sharing. And as I mentioned, you know, I am coordinating with Kristin on some upcoming meetings, but I also, once we get those scheduled, I would like to invite her to come to speak with the board. We used to have a Friends member present at most board meetings prior to COVID and then at least once a year, someone would formally talk to the board about things that were happening. So stay tuned for that, I'm sure we'll get something squared away soon. And finally, I just wanted to announce that we're having our first, I think this is our first author talk since before COVID, happening at the library on Wednesday, September 28th at 6:30 PM. Chronicle reporter Ted Reinstein, who's been here in the past, he's coming back to promote another of his books. It's called Before Brooklyn: The Unsummed Heroes Who Helped Break Baseball's Color Barrier. So he will be here Wednesday, September 28th, 6:30, right here in the community room, and the program is funded through the state aid to public libraries program. And I'm hoping that this is just getting us back on track so that we'll be back to hopefully hosting, you know, one to two authors and guest speakers, more releases, seemed to be how we were doing it before, so here's hope when we get back on track. Unless there's anything else from the reporter, anything that we talked about, talk about the buzzer, that's all we have for you today.
Is all good? Great, do we want to set the next meeting?
The only Tuesday that I'm available with our schedule here would be Tuesday, September 20th at 4:00. That's not possible, I have some days the following week.
That works for me. I think we just need to make sure about the time with, for the recording.
Okay, so we might have to bump the time.
Does the time, is the time a problem if we have to do it a little bit later on that day?
No, if it's later, that would be fine with, with me and with the board.
Is that okay with everyone else if it's a little bit later?
I have a book club meeting that night. It's at my house, so I don't know.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know what time, I mean, it might even, even if we start at like 4:15 instead of 4:00.
Right, 4:00, is that too, is that a bit too close?
Well, as long as I'm out by 5, I'll just, I'll just leave.
Okay. So Tuesday, September 20th, we'll put 4:00 for now? And then we'll follow up with the actual time, if, if that works.
Sounds good.
All right. We'll say 4:00, no later than 5:00 to start, maybe?
Okay.
Because then that way, if it's later than 5:00.
I don't think it has to be.
I don't think so either, but then, you know, that way, there's an end, like that we're not like, oh, 7:00, you know? All right, so we'll say that. It'll probably be more like 4:15.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Works. All right. All right, if we have nothing else, we need a motion.
I'll second it.
Call in favor. This August 30th, 2022 meeting of the Acushnet Public Library Board of Trustees is officially adjourned. It is 4:55. Thank you.